Good evening, everyone. High-tech stuff over here at the RTM. Hope we'll be able to change that soon. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could we stay in standing position for a moment of silence? I wanted to ask the body to think of the family, the Kabe family, in our town, Fairfield, who lost their eight-year-old child, Cristiano, due to complications to RSV. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Can I have a motion to consider? Sorry? Oh, roll call. Sorry. Okay, Betsy, roll call.
Ed Bateson. Marty Fury. Marty Fury. Melissa Longo. Amy Roggerio. Bill Gerber. Karen McCormick.
Here.
Cindy Perim. Jeff Steele. Alex Durrell. Jeff Galdenzi. Tom Lambert. Sharon Pastili. Laura Carson.
Here.
Michelle McCabe. Marcy Spolier. Liz Esma. Jennifer Barahona. Josh Garskoff. Joe Seibert. Jay Walk. Steve Barrettts. Hannah Gale. Andy Grisaffa. Lisa Havy. John Kuhn. Mark McDermott. Jill Vergara. Karen Whackerman.
Here.
Cameron Cheniski.
Here.
Hank Ferrence. Pamela Iacono.
Here.
Jim Myers.
Here.
Christine Brown. Drew Giorgiades. Margaret Horton. Kelly Sinto. Ken Astorita.
Here.
Peter Britton. Brooks Baracino.
Here.
Here.
Story Tolman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Can I get a motion to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 24, 2022? Motion to approve? Second? You have that? Any discussion on the minutes?
Thank you, Brenda. Sorry, Liz Esma District 4. My comments on page two read that my comment was that Mr. Diaz had stepped down because of the resolution. He had considered it. I was making a different point. But he actually resigned due to work conflicts. So the resolution had been very upsetting to him, and that was the reason that he had considered previously stepping down from the body. But ultimately, he resigned because of a work conflict.
It's really hard to hear online.
Can you guys hear this?
It's better. You're coming in and out, sort of.
Is that better? Webexers, is that better?
A little bit better.
We can hear that.
Okay. All right. I'm here to ask for a motion to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. May I have a motion from the floor? A motion for the amendment?
We have to do the minutes.
Oh, the minutes? I'm sorry. Can I have a? I apologize. Can I have a motion to accept the amended minutes? They're amended, correct?
Yeah, unless you're four and a half.
Is there any additional amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, a second on the amended minutes? All in favor?
The Webexers are having a hard time hearing again. Nothing's coming through.
Okay, all in favor of the amended minutes? I feel like I'm refereeing a football game. Can you hear me? All right, Mark, I hope you have a?
This is Representative Iacono. I'm going to abstain. I can't hear a single thing, so I have no idea what was amended.
Can you? I don't know, technical people.
Laura Carson, same here.
Any other abstentions?
Karen Whackerman, too.
Name with Myers.
Same with Giorgiades.
McCormick abstaining as well.
Same with Bateson.
Peter Britton abstaining. Can't hear.
Same with Spersino.
Same with Cheniski.
Same with Tolman.
How about now, guys? Can you hear that? Everybody on WebEx? Okay, because they did something. What a concept. Okay, so we're going to backtrack and go back that I asked for a motion to approve the minutes from October 24, 2022. And there was a member who came up and made an amendment. Would you like to come back up?
Thank you, Brenda. The amendment I am proposing is on page two. The section where I said that Mr. Diaz stepped down because of the resolution regarding racism as a public health crisis did not pass. I wouldn't mind if that stayed in there as a determining factor for, you know, his concern about continuing his service. But months after that is when he did tender his resignation for work conflict purposes.
So we have an amendment to the minutes. Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a discussion on this amendment on the floor to the minutes? Are you adding? Are you? What did he or she say, sir?
She's adding or taking out?
Are you adding or taking out?
I'm adding.
Pam, it's an add to the minutes, not taking out. Additional language to the minutes. Was that what's said at the meeting? Did you go back and watch the tape? Pam, did you hear that? Do you want to come up here? I don't. Why is it going through the laptop? That's not going to be good. Pam, can you hear me?
So I did not say at the meeting that he resigned because of the resolution. I said that during that debate and the failure along party lines of the resolution that he had considered stepping down, however, he decided to stay on the body. No, I did not go back and watch the tape. You're welcome.
All right, RTM Seibert, round of applause. All right. Are we done with the minutes? Or? No. It's the longest minutes in the history of the world. All right, so we have an amendment of the minutes. We had some discussion. It was hard to hear. Representative Iacono, do you want to restate your comments so people can actually hear them?
Yeah, I'm just going to abstain, having not knowing if the representative definitely said what she said she said. I'm just going to abstain on that amendment.
Okay. Is there any further?
It has nothing to do with audio quality. It has to do with the fact she didn't go back and watch the tape. So I have no way of knowing whether or not that's an editorialization or an actual stated
Is there any further discussion on the minutes? On the amended minutes?
This is Representative McCormick. I'm going to join in the abstention as well for the same reason because Representative Iacono stated.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any other representatives that have any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor of the amended minutes? All opposed? Abstentions?
We can't hear again.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Can you say your? Can you say your names so Betsy can record them? Go ahead.
Myers abstains.
Bateson abstains. Bateson abstains.
Tolman abstains.
McCormick abstains.
Spersino abstains.
No, that was on the amended minutes. Now, can I get a motion on the amended minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions on the amended minutes?
Iacono. Same crew that abstained before would make it easy for the clerk.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Now that we've been doing the minutes for a very long time, I would like to ask for any nominations from the floor for moderator. Any motions from the floor for moderator?
Liz Esma, District 4. I motion to nominate Mark McDermott as our RTM moderator.
Is there a second? You have that, Betsy? Are there any other nominations from the floor for moderator? Seeing none. Back to the body. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion seems to carry unanimously? Okay.
I can't hear.
And there you go.
To motion to make Mark McDermott the moderator.
Thank you, Brenda. Thanks for coming. Okay, can I have a motion for approval of deputy moderator? Somebody's got to mute. Somebody mute, please, on WebEx.
I'd like to nominate Marcy Spolier for deputy moderator.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Representative Lambert? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, looks like that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Marcy. Okay, just a quick reminder, as we do every year, as serving on this body, we need to keep an eye and follow the town charter, ethics, FOIA, code of conduct, and conflicts of interest. And for you new members, please, if you have any questions on any of the agenda items after the committee meetings, I know we didn't have any last week, but going forward we will. If you have any questions, please funnel those through me, and I'll get them to the proper people in the administration for an answer. Thank you. So item number five. So I'm sorry. Item number four, we're withdrawing that. That does not have to be done. There's nobody new to SLMC, and that's usually just done in an election year. Item number five, to consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the town clerk. Resolved that in accordance with the town charter and state filing rules, the representative town meeting hold their regular meetings for the year 2023 on the following dates: January 23, February 27, March 27, April 4, 18, and 19, which will be budget hearings. We're adding a third day back in there, specifically for one day for the BOE, one night for the BOE, and the 24th. May 1, May 20 is the budget vote. May 22, June 26, August 28, September 18, October 23, November 27, and December 18. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Pastili, seconded by Representative Horton. Are there any comments?
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment.
Representative Iacono, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My amendment is just to add the following. And further resolved, did the standing committees of the RTM meet on the following dates: January 17, February 21, March 20, April 17, May 15, June 19, August 21, September 11, October 16, and December 11.
Thank you. Any comments? Seconded by Representative Garskoff. Are there any comments?
Jill Vergara for District 7. I really appreciate putting this into the minutes, but I don't recall ever having to do this before, and I was wondering whether it's because of not having our committee meeting
Is that a question for me, Representative Vergara?
Yes. Yes, Representative Iacono.
Honestly, to be honest with you, I just, it caught my eye on the agenda. I don't think we've ever done it before, in all honesty, and I really think we should be doing it as a practice. We really need to notify the public what our meeting schedule is.
Okay, I agree. I thought that it was in the rules to regulate that we would have an accompanying committee meeting every month, so I did see it as being an error this month to not have one. So I do think it's a good idea for transparency's sake and just for everybody for the heads up to know our schedule. Thanks.
Right. That was just my point. And I think moving forward that we should just, as a practice, include it on the agenda. It's really a matter of, you know, just notification.
Thank you, Representative Vergara and Representative Iacono. I think it is good practice to do this. Obviously, November is not on the committee meetings for next year because it's an election year, so it will be an every-other-year thing for the November committee meetings. So any other comments concerning this amendment? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like it's approved unanimously. So now let's vote on the item as amended. No further comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. That item passes unanimously. We'll go right to item number six. To here, consider and act upon the following: reappointments to the employees' retirement board as recommended by the first select woman. John B. Mahoney, unaffiliated, 520 Fulling Mill Lane North, November 20, 2022 to 2027. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Pastili. Representative Seibert. Mr. Mahoney, you are with us on WebEx, I believe?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Could you just give us a little quick background and why you want to re-up for this particular committee?
Sure. I've been on the committee for the past seven and a half or eight years, just, you know, doing my part for the town. It was a business that I was in for a long, long part of my career. I stepped away about five years ago to build my own company and just, you know, enjoy being on the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the body for Mr. Mahoney?
Jill Vergara for District 7. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney, for all of your years of service. I just had a question because I saw in your resume or your application materials that you, your party affiliation, you identify as being an independent. Is that with the Independent Party? And if so, can we maybe have our town documents reflect that rather than being unaffiliated?
Yeah, independent.
Okay, so to the town clerk, I'm not sure why it wouldn't be reflected in our town documents. That's an official party of Connecticut. It's different than being unaffiliated, and I? Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Any other questions from the body? Anybody in on WebEx? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, looks like that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. Thank you for your many years of service, and good luck going forward.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, item number seven. To here, consider and act upon the following: reappointment to the historic district commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Rosina C. Negron, unaffiliated, 952 Old Post Road, term November 2022 to 2027. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Vergara, seconded by Representative Perim. Rosina's here tonight, so if you want to just come up and give us a little quick chat?
I've been in the historic district commission for one term already, and I feel that it's a good commission that we need in our town to be stakeholders of the three historic districts that we have, so I would like to serve again.
Thank you, Rosina. Any questions or comments?
Jill Vergara for District 7. I just wanted to commend Ms. Negron on her service. I reviewed minutes and saw that she has a stellar attendance record, even through her struggle with breast cancer and overcoming it. She was able to tend a crazy amount of meetings, and I think that we're so lucky to have her serving on this commission with the experience that she brings to it. And just as a member of the Old Post Road Historic District, I really appreciate having someone be a voice for us on that commission, and I know that she is someone who applies rules equitably and fairly to everyone, and that's hugely massively important for a role like this. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative Vergara, and I'd like to echo the same, since I live on the Old Post Road as well, that Rosina is a great choice to continue on this commission. So any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Rosina, and thank you for coming on tonight, and good luck. Item number eight. To here, consider and act upon the following: reappointments to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Mary S. Byer, Democrat, 4720 Congress Street, term November 2022 to 2026. Timothy W. Bezler, Democrat, 178 Glengarry Road, term November 2022 to 2026. Kirsten M. Ettaletta, Democrat, 90, South Pine Creek Road, term November 2022 to 2026. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Kuhn and Representative Grisaffa. We'll start with Mary Byer on WebEx. Okay. I don't see her up there, so Timothy, we'll start with you.
I've served two years of a partial term on the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, and I've enjoyed getting to know the people in the department, and I think they've done a great job with the making improvements of the transfer station. I'm an environmental engineer, and I'm very interested in improving the situation with, especially with recycling. And I think we've made some progress in the last two years about educating the public about what is and is not appropriate to put in recycle. And I think we've made some progress, and I'm looking forward to doing more of that.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Tim. Any questions, comments for Tim? Okay, seeing none in the chat. Let's hop to Kirsten.
Hi, I am Kirsten Etella. I filled the last part of a prior member's commission and got to know the committee. I'm an environmental attorney, so I also have an interest in these things, and was looking for a way to participate in the community in a way that would be, allow me to use my professional background to help to the extent that I can. And I've enjoyed the last few months, so I'm happy to continue if you all will approve me. So, thank you.
Any questions for Kirsten? Sounds like she's got some great qualifications. All right, do we have Misty? No? Representative Pastili?
I'd like to make a motion to split this item, to exclude Mary Byer just for the moment, and then I can give her a call and try to help her get into the WebEx.
Can I have a second? Representative McCabe? Any comments? Okay, all those in favor of splitting this out? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, that item carries. So we'll go back to the original we'll go back to the original question. So we're basically only voting on Mr. Belzer and Ms. Etella. Any further questions there? Are we good? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both, and good luck, and thanks for your service. All right, we'll come back if we can get Ms. Byer back online. We'll come back to that, okay? So we'll go to item number nine. To hear, consider and act upon the following reappointment to the Greater Bridgeport Transport Authority as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Pierre Ratsky, Democrat, 105 Westford Drive, term November 2022 to 2026. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Lambert, seconded by Representative Zesma. Pierre, you're on the, on WebEx?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Just want to give us a little bit about, I think we approved you last year for this, and you're re-upping, so just tell us how your experience was, maybe?
Thank you very much for the consideration. It's been a wonderful year. I've enjoyed very much working with my colleagues, and we've been tackling a lot of really critical issues that are facing our transit system, not the least of which is coming out of COVID, and also appropriately allocating the money that we're getting from the federal government, as well as the move towards electrification. And I've been very, you know, humbled and appreciative of learning from my colleagues, and I'm looking forward to another year of service. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Representative Vergara?
Mr. Ratsky, thank you so much for your service. This is such an important area. I, there are three bus stops in my district, and it's vital to the area. It's vital to our businesses. And it pains me to see people stand, sitting on cans on Old Post, on Post Road. I think it's not acceptable, and we've been asking for this to be changed and to get bus shelters, I think since I began on the RTM in 2015. So I just, I know this goes through your, I know this goes through the transit organization, and I just don't understand what the holdup is, and I was hoping that you could address that question.
Sure, so I know that improving bus shelters is a big priority. And in my time so far, in this past year, I've had occasion to vote on, you know, approving new shelters so that people aren't standing in the rain, because that's really, you know, that's a disencouragement for people taking public transportation. That's not right. So I appreciate you raising this. I'd love to talk to you more about specific bus stops you're talking about and try to see if we can move that up the priority list. Because I know, I know that getting shelters is a priority, and, you know, anything I can do to help make sure that the shelters in our town are given the utmost priority, I'll do.
Okay, thank you. I thought that there was some kind of complicated process in terms of getting the appropriations for these shelters, but I'd love to talk to you about it. Thanks.
Of course.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Any other comments or questions from the body? Anybody on WebEx? Okay. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you, Pierre, and congratulations, and I look forward to speaking to you in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, items number 10 and 11 will be postponed to, for us, maybe off until February, as the BOs postpone those items till January. So we'll be skipping over those. Item number 12. To hear an update from the RTM Redistricting Committee. Chairwoman Karen Whackerman, you're going to present, and anybody from your committee obviously can chime in if they'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the members of the committee are myself, Pam Iacono, Marcy Spolier, and Karen McCormick. And we had, our most recent meeting was on November 1st. We approved a map for the engineering department to create a meets and bounds description of the different districts. The map is attached in the materials that you got for this meeting. So that's a pretty final map, but we're not saying it's exactly final till we have the meets and bounds and we make sure they correlate. But I think it's fair to say that we're very close. We tend to, we have a meeting scheduled for December 6th. I don't know if the engineering department will have the meets and bounds finished by then. I hope to get an update at the end of this week. So, but I think we've made a lot of progress, and I think it's fair to say that we're pretty close to finalizing the districts. And then we created an ordinance for the RTM to approve.
Thank you, Representative Whackerman. Any of the other members of the committee want to speak? Okay. Seeing none, any questions from the body? Nope. Okay. We're still waiting to see if we can get Ms. Byer on the line here. Well, I'll just read item 13 while we're waiting, then. To consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the representative town meeting. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Just be patient. Representative Vergara has a point of information.
Is this the technology that we paid for? Like, is this the hybrid system that we're stuck with for? Okay, so it's been two and a half years. This is embarrassing. A lot of towns moved to hybrid five, six months after the pandemic started. I cannot believe that our meeting was almost completely disrupted. It basically still is. There are members who left because they couldn't meaningfully participate. It's unacceptable. We're the legislative branch. We don't have enough resources. This is just an example of that, and it's embarrassing as a town. We're a town of 60,000. We can do better than this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Where do we stand on this? Misty, just hold on one second. This is Mark, the chairman. Okay, so we're back to item number eight, where we split this item. So to hear, consider and act upon the following reappointments to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Mary S. Byer, Democrat, 4720 Congress Street, term November 2022 to 2026. So, Misty, as you're called, let's just give us a quick overview of why you want to re-up and continue on this. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for this sort of awkward call, but I'm pretty sick at home. In any case, I'm very concerned about the recycling and the whole issue of solid waste, and I think it's going to be a challenging uphill battle, but I think there's some pretty interesting solutions. So I look forward to the opportunity to work with John Cotell and his transfer station and the rest of the commission to try to find some solutions to getting a cleaner recycling product, cleaning the stream essentially, and also trying to figure out ways to get things out of that recycling, out of the recycling stream that really don't belong there, like glass and food waste. So I guess it's a passion of mine. I've just been interested in this for years. So I appreciate this opportunity to be able to to be on this commission and learn whatever I can to try to to help see this process. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes. Sounded great. Thank you, Misty, and I'm glad we waited to hear from you. Are there any questions or comments from the body? Okay, seeing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and congratulations, Misty, and we look forward to what you do on this commission.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity.
Take care. Good night. Feel better. Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Representative Seabert, seconded by Representative Havy. See everybody. All in favor? Aye. I don't think anybody's opposed or going to abstain, right? So we'll see everybody December 12th at our next committee meetings. Have a great week. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.